The eighteen twenty twenty four. Welcome, everybody. Shareholders alike. Without a mask on, everyone, go on and say the prayer.
You talked to one of the shareholders. I was talking to him. I want to call him. I just heavenly Father, that you have me here this morning. You're here so forward for the reason and directly into this holiday season. I ask for blessings for everyone here and all their family relatives and friends. Overseeing all of this as we go through this meeting. And just on end.
On end. Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call.
Councilman Biggles.
Here.
Second Chair, Mr. Wallace.
Present.
Councilwoman Irwin. Here. Councilman Redcorn.
Here.
Chairman Reddigo.
Here.
Councilman Rebar.
Present.
Councilman Chaloburg.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Here.
Ralph Korn.
Thank you, ladies and thank you, council. First off, number four on the agenda is the superintendent report. Superintendent, go ahead.
We don't have.
Reading of the record, superintendent's report from December eighteen, two thousand forty four. Uh, oil gas.
Copy of this?
And water royalties for October two thousand twenty four production.
Let me see if we can fucking excuse you. Chairman, can we get a copy of the report so we can follow along? Reading of the CISO point of order.
We I didn't, we didn't have it.
He didn't have it. He could stop.
He brought next copy.
Give me superintendent, we point of order, we need to do this to the CISOs.
Wave me an eye.
I'll read them. November twenty twenty four. Andrew Martin, August third, twenty twenty four. Maria Hoop, Netherlands. Milton V Laverty, October seventh, twenty twenty four. Buckoff Lill. Francis Cooper, September tenth, twenty twenty four, Costale, Arizona. Belinda K Henderson, November first, twenty twenty four, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Ralph T Atterbury, August twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, Bartonville, Oklahoma. Earl A Leonard, November fourteenth, twenty nineteen. Sedwick, Kansas. Frederick L Born, September twenty second, yeah, twenty twenty four, Inola, Oklahoma. Susan M Pierce, December the thirty first, twenty twenty. Location unknown. Eddie Jack Mob, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, Houston, Texas. Anthony A Trumbull, October fourteen, twenty twenty four, Clamens Falls, Oregon. Mary L Barnett Barrett, October third, twenty twenty four, Rockonero, Oklahoma. Cherry N Weaver, November twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, Plant City, Florida. Georgia N I Price, November twenty third, twenty twenty four. Scott Tuck, Oklahoma, that was the. That was my my day, but rest in peace. Go away. Now, go ahead. Sorry about the interruption.
My apologies for coming in. I thought you guys had three orders in depth and happy to be of that. Resuming the for for oil, gas and water royalties for October two thousand twenty four production. Total oil produced was three hundred twenty three thousand, two hundred fifty one point zero one barrel. And the royalties paid was three million, four hundred sixty nine thousand, one hundred thirty seven dollars and six cents. The total gas produced was three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred twelve MCF. Royalty paid one hundred thousand, one hundred twenty three dollars and twenty six cents. So, gas liquids produced was five hundred and seventy one thousand, six hundred ninety eight gallons. The royalties paid was six hundred, or excuse me, sixty seven thousand, nine hundred fifty eight dollars and seventy one cents. The total tank bottom produced was sixty one point one two barrels. And the royalties paid was a hundred forty seven dollars and eighty nine cents. The water usage royalty paid was six hundred fifty dollars. The waste disposal royalty paid was three thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars and eighty six cents. For rentals and bonuses, oil and gas rentals paid was seven thousand, three hundred sixty dollars. Uh, for there was no oil and gas bonus paid. There was also no rental collected for saltwater easement rental, there was one thousand, hundred dollars. For late payment charges collected, there was one thousand, one hundred and seventy eight dollars and forty cents. Uh, for other minerals produced, APAC produced twenty four thousand, one hundred ninety one point four two tons. And paid thirty thousand, four hundred thirty one dollars and nineteen cents in royalties. And that's for the month of October. Candy Creek Gravel, nine thousand thirteen point two one tons. And paid ten thousand, ninety four dollars and eighty cents in royalties for September. Burbank Materials produced seven thousand, five hundred ninety seven point four four tons. And paid nine thousand, eight hundred dollars and sixty nine cents in royalties for September. Wilson Ranch produced zero tons and paid three dollars and seventy one, seventy five cents in annual rental. Rocky Banks produced three hundred eighteen cubic yards. Paid a hundred and sixty five dollars in oil investment for October. And Schmidt Brothers produced four hundred and forty cubic yards and paid three hundred thirty dollars in royalties for October. For total producing wells, for total wells capable of production, sixteen thousand, uh, four hundred forty five. The system of, uh, one that, or eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty two oil wells. One hundred fourteen combination oil and gas wells. Fifty one water and gas injection wells. Uh, one thousand, two hundred and fifty four injection wells. A hundred and two water supply wells. There was one thousand, eight hundred and forty two gas wells. Four hundred ninety two, they're TA. A hundred and thirty that are saltwater disposal with easement. Eight that are injection with easement. Two that are water supply well with easement. There's five that are gas, uh, wells with easement. Seventy two that are CO two injection. And nine hundred and forty one that are saltwater disposal without easement. Four approved permits, there were five workover permits approved, four plugging permits that were approved. And then zero emergency plugging and workover permits and zero drilling permits. And there were no new drilling completion, uh, no new well, no, no new drilling completion reports from the.
Thank you, superintendent. You calculate out, October, uh, production calculates ten thousand, four hundred point seven barrels a day. So it's going up or down. Something, you know, it was nine, ninety, ninety, ninety nine hundred. But.
Were the plugging permits for that situation?
Uh, there was, I believe, two that were approved for the nation that were done as a, on a non emergency basis.
The CO two injection. Is that, is that under pressure? Would you know that? I don't know. I'm, I'm asking you.
The CO two, from my understanding, it is. I mean, you could, to produce it or to inject it, it has to be under pressure. I mean, the exact PSI, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that whole system in the Burbank is under pressure. And I'm thinking, pressure wise, I think it's around eighteen hundred, uh, pounds. I think it needs to be that high in order to be, uh, uh, merciful. To be effective on the, on the EOR. The question I have, Chairman, uh, is the wastewater disposal royalty? That's coming from, uh, you share that, that's in the bar call I said. Do you know, have you heard anything more about, uh, their plan in the repair of the plant? Cause I think this represented about a hundred and ten barrels of fluid a day. The, uh, I think it was about one fifth of their capability. I'm just curious if you've heard anything from them and they told you what their plans are or their progress.
We haven't heard anything further since the last update. They had resumed operations and were exploring opportunities to try and raise capital. The bank was necessary to repair stuff, bring it back up. But we haven't heard anything further.
That's all I had to do.
Yes, I just have one comment. I received a call and I was gonna ask second chair, and I wanna look into this. Someone's using a lot of river creek gravel. And they're moving a lot of it, but you're saying that someone who's bought some property, a lot of it. And they're actually moving it to their other location to fix up some roads, is what I was told.
I can hear you.
No, that's fine. I'll, I'll speak up a little bit. I just received a call and someone's wanting us to have, talk to the BIA about specifically. I'm gonna try to get you a location to go review. We had one issue before that you all have checked out there. I think it's probably the same thing. But my concern is exactly that, uh, if they're moving it, you still need something to tell them that. Yeah. Or I would, I would actually ask the council that we acquire. Even if they are, even if it's not leaving it. They're not, they're not restricted those days. We do that on their property, but if this is another function and we find out it's not going to their other location in there, I think we need to know. But I'll check that out while we're on our Christmas.
Anybody else?
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Uh, I noticed that our lease sale is in open business, uh, the agenda item.
Yeah.
Under nine A. I was wondering if, uh, I didn't know if the superintendent is planning to stay here for the home meeting or not. I'm just curious to know whether or not we oughta, um, move that up while he's here or ask him to stay for that discussion. I'm not sure what, what the, what the discussion about the lease sale is going to be. So I just wanted to, uh, to inquire if you think it might be appropriate to have the superintendent present during that discussion. That's all. Thank you.
It was put on the agenda, I believe. I just wanted to, I wanna know how the council felt. At least it wasn't anything.
During the biannual meeting, you guys discussed moving it out so that there would be more time. And they were, we, they told us that we needed to have a resolution to change today. So that's why.
Superintendent was sure that that's what, um, maybe they've thought about, maybe moving, moving it back. So if you want to, would you like superintendent to stick around for that?
I don't, I don't think that'd be necessary.
That's what that was about.
Okay.
I would advance on the agenda. Besides that, I've got a few other things. I've got, uh, appointments on the, on my calendar for today.
Okay. There was a, a letter that we, we were thinking about writing, that our geologist, Bill Lynn, brought us a, probably a request to the superintendent. And I give him a copy of that. If you want to stick around for that, you don't, you don't have to. We'll talk about that when I'm gonna get to, to the agenda. So that, that's anybody, any other questions? Thank you, superintendent.
Well, I had one other thing I was gonna circle back with you guys that I was asked about during the biannual. Which was the range of processing time for some of the permits. Um, so I was gonna give you an update on those for the emergency plugging permits. Those went anywhere from one day to thirty seven days for fiscal year twenty twenty five. For workovers, our range was forty eight days to fifty eight days. And then for non plugging, for non emergency plugging, it was a turnaround of fifty to eighty three days. And then we didn't have any drilling permits approved for fiscal year twenty twenty five yet. I think total queue we have for fiscal year twenty twenty five is fifty seven, uh, permit spending.
Any other question? Thank you, superintendent. Appreciate it very much. I'll let you know what, what we decide, uh, maybe I have to write a letter to you to request that information. Thank you. So the BFTA, uh, here? I'm like here, so we'll go on to the treasure report. You might come to treasure.
Christmas shopping.
Maybe they'll come to that sometime. They come in late.
They say, I want.
I'm going to new business, is, uh, EPA on, on zoom?
No, we were unable to invite EPA because of the system, so.
And would you put on, Rick, how long's that system been down?
A week tomorrow.
At least a week, sir, cause I couldn't even get through.
He knew about it. I, I wrote him an email before the system went down. And then everybody's gonna be. Okay, well. Go on, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Irwin, your, your next one.
Okay, um, in the past, we had the EPA give us a presentation on their opinion about the CO two in our air buckle. And I just want to be able to make that information public. We're having a CO two meeting Thursday. The chief called one. It's from nine thirty to eleven thirty. And I'd like these people to know that it's not conducive for us here to have it in our air buckle. That's what the EPA said. You know, there's maybe certain spots, but not, it's not, so they, they said they weren't gonna issue any classics.
They're in the public.
I know. But I'm just saying, these people need to know about this, this CO two.
Yes, sir.
Chairman.
Right, sir.
Yeah.
When we received that report from the EPA, that where they advised us that they declined the permits and the reasons why, including that reason. Uh, that was done in open session and it was done by a PowerPoint, I believe. So, so it is, it is public information.
Okay, I thought it was executive session. I just wanted to make sure.
It was in open session.
Okay, because these people need to know.
Couple more.
No, it wasn't. That report part went.
The PowerPoint was. The PowerPoint was in executive session, correct?
I haven't remember what she, I don't think it was. Believe it, no possession.
Unless it's like.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Okay.
I, I just.
It, it still could be brought up at whatever you think, but be a little, uh, okay, be cautious.
Thank you, council. Next on the agenda, the new business, item C, letter to the superintendent. Information request on your, on your, in your book that says old business, go to old business and it's the very next paper rep.
Last of the executive.
Right before that. It says, dear, dear superintendent Trumbull. We're asking for digital copies of two oh eights and electric log from all new well drilled. Well drilled, moving forward on an ongoing basis in a timely manner by the OCA. All two oh eights and electric logs from wells drilled since the beginning of twenty sixteen. Number three, monthly, unless the lease change reports. Number four, hard copy of the nineteen eighty three Oswego and Mississippi maps. Number five, digital copy of the nineteen forty air photo. And number six, digital copy of engineer's cloth platinum. Digital cloth copy of engineer's cloth platinum. Not, we don't want to open burden the BIA staff and realize that you may not have the, uh, equipment or staff to make all this available at this time. Cause there is there any way that we can lessen the burden on your staff. Granted, we do have a high speed log scanner that our staff geologists utilize if needed for the electric cloth. That's the letter. Bill, you wanna come up and explain a little bit more about that? Got the floor.
All right, it started, uh, council. Chairman, vice chairman. It, it started, uh, was talking with the, uh, Russell Bellamy, the IT person there with the OCA agency. And he asked if we needed copies of, of the eighty three Mississippi and Oswego maps. And then we also talked about the nineteen forty air photo. Uh, we used to have a set of nineteen thirty eight airphones here, but those over in archive or somewhere. And so also the, uh, the plot book is probably the best thing we have for, uh, engineer's plot book to find the locations. So the whole world spotted correctly on there. So there's a lot of locations that, um, you'll find, uh, with the digital maps that are a little bit off. And then, uh, also for the two oh eights, uh, the electric logs and the, uh, two oh eights for any well that's drilled. I'd like to get that for us like on a monthly time base or something, so we can actually get that out on our website and open to the public. We don't have time hold rules here. You have ten days to, uh, turn in your information, electric logs and two oh eights. And that's always been one thing that, uh, oil finders have to their advantage to look for oil here in those states. I'd like to get back to that. And then going back to twenty sixteen, I don't think we have any of the electric logs or two oh eights on wells that have been drilled since then. Yeah, that's it.
Any questions, Bill?
I'd just like to say that last recommendation is talking about a handful of wells. Don't, don't think we're talking about our days to the ground or, what is it, twenty two maybe? And how could we not have that available? Thank you, chairman.
That's very.
Thank you, Chairman. We've already wrote a letter asking for a copy of all well records across the whole county. I don't know what's magic about new wells. I'd like to have them all. And I don't know. Has, has this letter been dealt yet or is this?
Any other question?
I'd like to answer that.
Go ahead, Bill.
The reason we're doing this is because no one sees any new wells. The whole world's been cut off since twenty sixteen. So at least we could get all these sultan wells and, and all the new wells that are drilled. Get those on the website and, uh, get the current activity.
We don't get the old ones out.
Well, the old ones, we have three townships and then we've scanned some that we can put on there. It's just. This is information that they can provide in, in fifteen or twenty minutes. Yet all the records is gonna take a year to scan all that information.
Chairman. Go ahead.
Yeah, while the superintendent's still here, could we ask the superintendent if that'll be, uh, something they, they're able and willing to do?
Chief Lieutenant.
I would respond, I mean, I'll respond if this is the recommendation or request of it. I'll accommodate to the best of my abilities and respond to any of the ones we can. I would respond, uh, I guess, write into your guys' letter with an explanation if we can't accommodate it. But the extent I can accommodate, I'm not gonna be commenting to the request that we'll see.
Thank you, thank you, Chief Lieutenant.
One last comment.
Three.
Regarding the well records. The well records and the inability for, uh, for, for the outside world to have access to the well records is probably one of the two primary reasons why we don't have any activity here in OCA. Our lease terms are a little bit uncompetitive according to, uh, our, our, uh, the D E N D study.
Excuse me.
But still, uh, the two, I think, in my personal opinion, uh, two most critical reasons why we don't have a lot of activity when our neighboring counties are, is because of the lack of well records, the access to well records. You can't put together a drilling prospect without well records. And then the other, of course, is the total of federal regulations, uh, pending, uh, implementation. The black cloud over our mineral estate. Those are the two reasons, the primary reasons, in my opinion, of why we don't have, uh, let's say, more activity, but actually any activity. We don't have any activity, uh, from, uh, other than a few local operators working on their wells. So, uh, I just wanted to take this opportunity, since we're talking about well records, to emphasize how important, I think, that the well records are to, uh, our exploration and development of our mineral state. Thank you, Chairman.
That's a memorable.
I forgot what I was gonna say. It's talked so long.
Usually it's five minutes.
Was it five minutes?
Usually that. It's going off what all this talk about. Councilman Rebar. You know, whenever we come on board here, two and a half years ago, something like that, there was certain things that this body discussed. Whenever we come on board, there were certain things this body discussed for the last decade or two. And, uh, still no, no resolve. You hear this story, and our shareholders, payments going down, certain things are out of, out of our control, but there are certain things that should be. Have to be, that need to be, that ought to be, however you wanna say it, within our, our control of being able to develop this mineral state. One of them is absolutely for sure, being able to control the well records and be able to produce them to whatever at the behest of the people that come in and have an interest in investing their money into this mineral state. I have to stand here, and it'd be like me going down to my bank and saying, wait, no, I'd like to have a copy of my record, my, uh, bank statement like that. Well, we're gonna have to, we'll, we'll have to scrub it real good before we give it to you, certain things like that. And I understand the processes and rules, but this is something that's been going on for a long, long, long time. And we keep seeing the decline of mineral state. And we have a gentleman here that's been an old man for fifty years. Knows firsthand, probably one of the experts in the field, why, one of the main reasons why that the, this mineral state is, is diminishing every, as we're sitting here. And still to this day, we, we reach out and we ask, can we have the road records? Can we have this? Can we have that? And I thought, you know, I, 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 I've heard people say, well, they're not our, well, they're ours. I thought, you know what? They're in the safekeeping, I, I suppose, whether it's in Fort Worth or in some mines in Kansas or whatever, you know? And, uh, that's, I, I guess that's good. But, you know, it's like having your, uh, you know, your light switch in some, in your neighbor's house. I wanna turn off my lights so I can go to sleep and I want mine to go outside and flip it off, you know? So I wanna go drill some wells and stuff and not have to run paperwork through the office here, through Skogee, to DC and where, however far it reaches. And the process is slow enough as it is. And then you add that to, it compounds it. It's just, you know, we sit here time and again, we hear this, you know? And it's just like, at some point, is, is, is that, that big wave ever gonna break over back into the favor of the shareholders? You know, and, and we, we batter head against that door. I remember when Gunfield coaches in Houston, others. You know, they played Pittsburgh Steelers. They said, no, we get to the door. Next year, we'll get to the door. We're beating on the way. Well, these doors, well, these days, that door's gonna file and we're gonna get what we need. And, 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 and we keep plugging away at this. And at some point, you just realize, is it ever gonna happen? You know, what's, what's the end result on this? What's, what's our next step in covering these records? And, and what, like Bill said, whatever takes a year and a half, okay, what's been going on for two decades? We've already had them for the last nineteen years. So what do we need to do to get it to pass that year? So we can have access, so the oilmen can have access to, so they can start drilling more wells here on our estate and start helping our people survive. Not just thrive, survive. Thank you.
Chairman, we're on the straight.
Go ahead, Chairman.
We've got two pending FOIA requests from our, uh, request a thousand of records which might anticipate will be filled within the next month or so. Um, to the extent people want access to the records, they can get them. Again, if you're asking for thousands of pages of records, it will take a FOIA because I have to allocate staff and resources to fill that. And we have to charge for the records that are produced, both by labor and for the cost of production that's under federal regulation. But to the extent they want access to the records, I'm happy to satisfy those requests as they come in. If they give us, if they request specific records or give us something that we can work with. Again, if someone brings these solutions, I'm happy to implement them and will continue to do so as long as I occupy the chair. So to the extent people want access to the records, make a request. I'm happy to accommodate them to the extent we can.
I, I appreciate it. Is that all? That, that's it? Councilor Rebar.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to reiterate, uh, the, the competitive aspect, the competition. Anywhere else in the country, somebody wants to, uh, develop and explore in any other state. Even here in Oklahoma. And they have an opportunity and maybe buy some production or maybe follow along a trend of new activity. The well records in those areas of interest are at the keyboard of a computer in someone's home or basement or in office. Just by logging into the local website for that area. In, in our case, outside of the mineral state and be the corporation commission for the other seventy six counties of Oklahoma. But in Texas. But in Texas, it's a rental commission in Texas. It's just logging into the website, putting in an area by geographic description, by a, uh, section township and range description. Maybe by the name of the field, a known field. Uh, and it's at the fingertips and the well records are there to click on and download and for free. And that's what our competition is with Paine County, Pawnee County, Chautauqua County, Kansas, Washington County, Tulsa County. All, all that surround us. That's our competition. That's one of our, you know, competitions. And we're just not competitive. And I just wanted to reiterate that and I appreciate it. I'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rick. Uh, I've talked to Bill a couple of times about this over the last, sort of week. You know, what, what, what I understand, I'm not a computer wizard or anything like that. But what I understand, when, when we get this information, he can put it on a scanner and make it available to, to, to the producers and, and so they can look at it. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, on our website.
Yeah, that's, that's the general, uh, consensus about it. So, that, that's a good thing, I believe. Anybody else on the council? Coming from, uh, White Horn, you have a question?
Yes, Chairman. I was just curious to know that we were talking about a, a FOIA request and the charges, uh, is that to producers? Does this count? How do you fill out a FOIA request in order to get those records? And if they want, say they want a ten through, two thousand and ten through two thousand and sixteen, would they have to pay a fee to get those as well? With the FOIA request for this council or are you just talking about individual producers? Thank you.
It would depend on the extent of their request. I'm happy to review it when it comes in and advises as appropriate. To the extent I can accommodate it, I'm happy to accommodate it.
Anybody else on the council? Thank you, Bill, for your, your effort and, did, we need, we need a resolution for this or we can't read it or write a letter?
Uh, to allow you to sign, you do need one?
Okay, there you go.
To allow you to sign the letter?
Yeah.
Yes.
We did, do need a resolution of that. Well, the floor's up for motion for the letter, this Superintendent Trumbull. So moved. Second, second with Councilor Rick Rick. Any discussion? Eric Dunn, call for the vote.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair, Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle? Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes, yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chapelford? Councilman Chapelford?
Yes, sorry.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Uh, getting ready to go into executive, we'll take a, uh, five-minute break. So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Waller, second by, uh, with a short break, Chairman. Okay. Councilman Redcorn, directing your session. Any discussion? Eric Dunn, call for the vote.
Second Chair, Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle, sorry.
Yes.
Councilman Redmore?
Yes.
Councilman Chapelford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Five-minute break. Come back with your executive.